Like, otherwise we're just gonna put a weight in front of it like we always do. I don't wanna move the weight.
You don't want to be extra, extra size, right, if you go around? Well, Brady, that's nice.
Try and swing it like me.
I'm sure the dandies are off.
Yep, dandies are off.
You guys are, that's really cute, by the way. That's right, alright.
We're going to the United Experience.
That's Stacy's talking over there.
Yeah, you guys are in the first place.
So we're good?
Yes.
That's a very good TV trip, I'd like to poke the table.
There's not a lot of room with the camera.
You're like, do you want me to sit there?
No, we can't.
We're, we're good.
Wait, do you see her?
Did you see?
In the future. Don't want to smash your head as well. I gotta get my Carol timer to play at all.
Girl, this is a pull-up slice, right here.
She's Katie and then a two.
But one more board meeting.
One more board meeting.
And is she gonna like get up and walk out in the middle of it?
She says slam her foot forward down, boom.
So really, really thriller tonight.
Jack, I'm gonna come up with some crazy.
We'll get you some more chairs.
Once you get to your seat, you don't have to.
If you wanna get more chairs and more.
But if you're, if you want to. If you're. If you want.
You want to.
I'm sorry.
You're bright.
You do. Hey, uh, we need more dinners, who is the nicest?
You guys, I said.
She gets to buy.
Last thing I remember. Not Lauren, not the kid.
That's why my door going down there now.
There.
About landing over the long, I could give you mine for some.
She's so nice. She's gonna get all set.
A girl official.
Yeah, you know, official.
Take that. Bad. Do you wanna still bad and all official? Okay, here you go. For you to fall official now, write notes. I don't like lying. Maybe her so.
Any group, if you want me to wear a mask, it's okay.
Luckily, I'm.
I still don't. I think there's something in my mind that's just gonna, like, not let me get it.
Can you please not say that?
Josh.
I should not, that's what I hear. Josh? I'm a little scared, but.
I'm really sorry.
You're coming along for Adam. I know he was gonna.
I'm not giving him back.
I'm glad. I feel bad for saying.
Well, I need a photo copy of the written.
You're shutting this down. Hey, can you touch Brandon's?
Go ahead.
Anybody have Brandon's number?
Oh, wait, sorry, yes, I just got an email that he might be a few minutes.
Oh, okay, then, no problem.
Okay, Mike, you're in wedding?
Well, I'll hold it in a second, I guess.
Selling new.
Did you guys do that?
I think we had a book. I see he was having a summer.
There's no bike over.
John, did you get a book from Lisa Shepherd? Who gave me a book about like.
Where he's no mind from.
Past few weeks, and I couldn't tell if it was just from me.
Stephanie, no.
Or I read. She didn't give me anything. Looks like she gave something.
Whoa.
I don't think.
I understand.
Someone, yeah, like downstairs, like, there's a book for you with a, you know, I'm looking on, like.
I'm sorry.
Just about a guy who, who gave something. Had it administered.
That's not me.
Someone.
No. Jenny?
Did you get someone else's homework books?
It says, it says, Michael Kovey on it, and a vanilla envelope. From Mesa. It must be Jenny. Jenny must have given.
I, um, no, I did, I give books to them all the time.
There was a book, I actually like, I asked, like, how did you start changing?
Did you get one, did someone get a little bit?
Get on board.
He did that, yeah.
Did somebody bring you a doorbell, did I? Jenny's doing that around the books.
I mean, they were, that is a orientation.
No.
That was in Brandon and, uh.
No, but it's all left it for me, so I'll bring it back to you.
It went to the wrong person.
Why? I didn't deliver it.
It was in, no, is it a vanilla envelope for me when I went to the gym? It goes for you, Joey, I've seen it.
Was that the board packet?
No, I get the board packet, I.
We'll figure out it. Hi, Brandon, how are you? Okay. For you already, Lisa.
Okay, so, so, yeah, she, he should.
I'm not sure right now she would hit you now, but so. I'll do signals, maybe, but.
I call the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one regular award meeting at Glencoe Park District order. Lisa, please call the roll in open time.
It is seven oh four. Commissioner Warren?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Underdunk?
Here.
Commissioner, President Brooks?
Yes.
Um, Kobe. He's on there, Kobe.
Oh.
You just felt a Kobe, like, I was that Kobe. Like, C O B.
You did that on purpose.
Kobe?
Yes.
Kobe's always the name, mom. It's high, it's high six.
So then, this, you, you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Kobe.
Now you're all getting one, Lisa. And so, totally threw it off, again, yeah, I jumped there.
Yeah, I'll be calling whatever you want.
Or that used to be in public again. Alright.
Okay. Consent agenda items A and B are routine recommended motion. Does any commissioner want any item pulled from consent agenda items? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So who?
Number one.
I love that.
Roll call though, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kobe?
Yes.
Mr. Lutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Underdunk?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes.
It is our practice not to address questions at this time, however, we will take comments under advisement. Is there anyone who would like to make a verbal comment? If so, please limit the comments to three minutes per person. And we will also have Lisa read comments, but Andre.
Let me take this up.
Yes, she can.
Andre Lerman?
Thank you. Andre Lerman, two four four Hazel Glenco to the board. I personally congratulations to the newly elected. And returning, uh, board members who are taking their oath of office either tonight or next month. Uh, congratulations to all three of you on your accomplishment as resident of the Park District. I truly appreciate your interest and dedication to the board and to volunteering to serve the community. I look forward to your contributions. Uh, to departing Commissioner Lutton. Josh, with whom I've had the privilege of serving under his direction as chair of the Lakefront Advisory Board for four years. Josh, you've served the community and the Park District with distinction. Thank you for your four years of service, for your leadership, for your gravitas, and for your advocacy for the Glencoe Beach, which I believe is one of our community's crown jewels. Thank you, Josh. Uh, and I'd also like to take a minute or so to talk about departing Commissioner Dudley Underdunk, with whom I served two overlapping years on the board. Dudley, you have had an impact on this board and the district in your time as commissioner. You served as vice president my last year of office, then became president, and also was treasurer. That's a trifecta. In my experience, your gravitas, your thoughtfulness, careful consideration of every issue, was for me a model on how public officials should approach the responsibilities on these boards. In addition, you always added a needed dose of critical thinking, especially when the board was facing tough decisions or sorting through various options. Thinking fast, not thinking fast, thinking slow. Thinking slow. Um, I had the opportunity to discuss with, to discuss with others, uh, your candidacy two years ago, when you were up for the, this term that you're just not finishing, this two-year term. And then this past year to discuss your candidacy for village trustee. And people would ask me, they would say, what is it like to serve on the board with Dudley? And I would say, Dudley chose his words very carefully. When Dudley spoke, people listened. When Dudley spoke, people listened. So Dudley, I think the Park District and the Park Board are in a, in a better place because of your service. And I'm looking forward to your continuing service, uh, as an incoming village trustee. And I believe there's an opportunity to strengthen the relationships between elected officials on the Park Board and the Village Board. And you are in a unique position to do just that. And I think if you can do that, I think a stronger working relationship between the elected officials, between the elected officials on the Park Board and the Village Board is gonna lead to concrete benefits for the entire community of Glencoe. So congratulations, Dudley, on completing your two terms, your six years of service. And I look forward to the next chapter in your community service. Thank you, Dudley. And with that, Madam Speaker, I yield the rest of my time.
I have one, um, I have a sickening email.
Okay.
From Michael Glass. And, um, says, hi, Lisa, I was hoping you'd get a chance, chance, get a chance to share this letter with the Park Board tonight. First in admission, I have become a pickleball addict. This game is growing at incredible pace and people everywhere are loving it. I've been playing in Glenview, at Flick Park, Six Court, half, the people waiting almost every day. Same for Northfield and Millport. Twenty-four people, and this is almost exclusively a doubles game. Behind both of those, those courts are tennis courts, which are seldom used. I drove around to all the Glencoe courts on Sunday, it was the nicest day of the year. I took some photos and pictures while we had the courts. And some signs I mentioned, the resurfacing is imminent. I can hear them at a later date. This is a perfect time to convert some of the courts who dedicated to the law courts. I know there are times, uh, there are some lines at Watts Park and portable nets there. It's not the same, and nets are saggy and no, and not proper heights. I'm pretty sure every tennis court is large enough for three pickleball courts. It's time to convert some courts to pickleball with copper nets and lines. I'm hundred certain, hundred percent certain they will pack every night, no time. Let's do this. Thank you, Michael Glass.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa. Uh, I have two emails that are very, very short. Two emails that I received relatively recently that I thought I would share during this time. I did get a question for one, never got a hold of the other one, but I'll just use first names for that. I do get emails, uh, often get emails, typically more in the line of a complaint or a concern. Um, but every now and then, I get an email that, you know, compliments us on something, which is a big deal because that's not what usually gives people the energy to write an email. It's usually they have something they want to, uh, question. Uh, so these are two complimentary, um, emails and, and relate to the commissioners who are going to be exiting. This is happening during the time. Hi, Lisa, uh, we want to congratulate you on the way Duke Park and Ominidior Park are turning out. The playground looks extraordinary and in spite of our initial concerns, the path from Mayville to Park is attractive and adds a new dimension to the park. My thanks for all your hard work, thank you for this reality, thanks for three of his grandchildren, can't wait to put the playground open. Uh, give our best to Danny, please. Uh, these are people who know us, uh, they're not close friends, but they know us socially and so forth. And they actually had attended one of the initial meetings where we had residents come in and express a concern about the project. So I love, what I love about this is that it turned around once they saw the project in place, as we knew it would or hoped it would, so that was, uh, you know, very nice to see. And the second one, very brief, my thanks and congratulations to you, your fellow board members of the staff, on the outstanding renovation of our parks and playgrounds. Jean and I, our kids and grandkids are all deeply impressed, best. So, uh, very nice to see you after an active few years with, um, with Josh and Dudley. Okay, so, uh, still no Brandon, or I think.
Both Brandon's here.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Besides, I need you.
Okay, I'm gonna be honest, I thought he was like.
Student?
I appreciate that.
I guess we've never met the person before.
It's not hard here. I got this. Some people get younger, I got older.
Okay, uh, now we will move on to recognition of the comments from retiring commissioners. I am going to now acknowledge and recognize audience members in this order. Okay, first to speak, if you have anything you'd like to say, former commissioners, uh, are ready to speak. Um, and next, we, if there's no other former commissioner would like to speak, we will move on to current commissioners. If either, uh, if any of our current commissioners would like to speak. Stephanie, would you like to?
I just want to thank both of you, and I enjoy serving with both of you for different reasons. And, you know, Josh, you always had really, like, thorough, well-thought-out things to contribute, and your passion for the beach, I think, really helped, you know, us frame some of that. And Dudley, your passion for sustainability and other things, really, you know, you added to the board. But both of you are just a pleasure to serve with. And even though we all didn't always vote the same, everyone was respecting everyone's opinion and took the time to hear everybody out and vote their decision, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, I'm further down the agenda, so I will, I will speak later. Uh, is there anyone from the Glencoe Caucus who would like to speak?
Am I not speaking?
Oh, I didn't, you didn't, you seemed to.
Oh, I thought you were going to Rivers though.
Oh, no, please.
You're also.
In the actual, yes, go ahead.
You're, okay. You guys have done such great things for the community. Um, I, I echo exactly what Stephanie has said. Um, you force me to think a little bit differently at times, uh, think about things that I'm not as passionate about as you are, both. Um, and I, as I've talked to both of these before, um, I think one of the best things about this board is everyone has a little bit of a different focus, um, area that, that's your passion point, sustainability. Quite frankly, I never thought too much about sustainability, um, and now I think about it all the time. And so. I'm taking your word. I'm W D D. So I think of that all the time. And Josh, I think you, you always bring a very interesting perspective. I think more times than not, we come to the same conclusion, by very different paths, and you force me to think differently, and sometimes I think, what would Josh think? Um, so I just wanted to say, as the newest member of the board for a little bit, that I'm really appreciative of having you guys here to help guide me and help me think about different things, because it's very important to have a role right at the fore.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, uh, now, does anyone in the audience wish to speak or comment?
Of you guys, your audience.
I would just like to thank, like to thank both you, Josh and Dudley, um, for your service and being so supportive of staff. Um, you both, uh, were very helpful from a financial perspective. Josh, I remember coming on the board and you had ideas on what our master plan, um, was gonna look like, our three to five-year plan, and really, I think, set the tone for our district and how we review that and do this. And, uh, was very helpful to me in that process. And Dudley, it's serving as treasurer as well. I know both myself and Liz in the business office, we really have appreciated that from you as well, so thank you, thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Well, um, it's been a pleasure working with both of you. I will say from a staff's point of view, you always pushed us, always pushed us to think differently, and gave a different spin on things that challenged us, and I have to say, I really respect that, and thank you for your service.
That's a hard act to follow, right? You know, I was just gonna say, thank.
Chris, we're still, we're still your boss. Well, I, I, I wanna echo what Bobby, Carol said, the support of the staff, you know, in the last year in particular. There's been a lot of really hard choices that were made by this group that could have had a really significant impact on a lot of lives of the people that I work with every day. And it, it was really great to know that the board was behind the staff and trusted us and, you know, helped the district and the community steward themselves through an unprecedented challenge. So thank you, guys, for all the work and thought that you put into that and for believing in the team that we have several years.
Thank you. Oh, you, you can't, oh, oh, you.
For Josh.
Oh, yes, but I'll, if you don't mind, should I?
Can I go first? Before you go?
I'll add.
My name wasn't on the list, I was like, oh my gosh.
No, yes, of course.
I just want to thank both of you also. You know, I remember reading the board training with both of you, where I gave the big binders and all those books that Josh shared. It's so nice and exciting. Um, and I, and I remember. Um, I remember telling you or talking to you about the role of a board member, and that a good board member, um, watches from the balcony and lets staff get on the dance floor. And you guys did a great job at that. You made high-level decisions, had high-level discussions, and then you let us take your lead and implement all those, all those ideas and exchanges. It's really difficult when, when you have board members trying to tell you that maybe you should cut this piece of grass or this piece of grass, and you're down to microscopic. So you've done a really, really great job of that, you're excellent board members, really saw big pictures, and you just, we get, accomplish so many great things. And I think about Connect Glencoe, and I know that when Josh came on, he was a big board of trails. And, um, and I think this trail, while staff was like, we're gonna put new infrastructure in. Um, you guys said, oh, we need to put this trail in, this is something that will connect the whole community together. And go find the money for it. And luckily, we did find the money for it, but when you look at that trail and how many people use it, and what a great amenity that will be for hundreds of years, um, kudos to you. And that's mentioned all the parks and playgrounds and, and other infrastructure improvements we've made. So thank you for giving your time away from your family, um, to serve, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa. Any, anyone else would like to speak? So, this is the point where I am gonna make some comments, so I'll share some personal thoughts about some.
You'll have to, can't.
And you will.
No, no, this is what made us think, it's me and Josh.
And, oh, specific, yes, thank you, yes, you're absolutely right. Yes.
I just wanna thank Josh for his work with Lakefront, uh, Park and the boating community. He's really our liaison for that area, really opened up my eyes to that area. His work with, um, the nonprofit Friends of the Green Bay Trail was important, and that sort of provided the, what we call template, or the beginning of the idea to connect Glencoe, connect the Green Bay Trail, and that is wonderful, wonderful, uh, asset for the community. Josh also helped us look at policies. I appreciated his analytical approach. And in our last meeting, I almost fell out of my chair when he was arguing for a sustainability item of not building something because it would disturb the environment. Do you remember that?
The trail? Yeah.
Got it, huh? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dudley.
Very nice.
I guess if I may.
Yes, please.
President, since Dudley did that, I wanted to thank Dudley, especially, um, for your long-term public service, uh, to the community, you've done a role model for me and I'm sure of others. We've talked a lot about Connect Glencoe. But Dudley, you're doing that in a different sense now, you're going on to connect Glencoe by, by serving on the village board. And I really think that's gonna be a powerful connection for the community, to have somebody that knows the ins and outs of, of this large, well, not, not that there's only two, but two of our large government partners, uh, so thank you for being willing to take your time.
Okay, I'll just try to get through this quickly. I'm going to share some personal thoughts about our retiring commissioners, Josh Lutton and Dudley Underdunk. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve with them, a sentiment that has been shared tonight by my fellow commissioners. Although it sounds cliche, it is true to say their unique skills and perspectives contributed to what I would consider to be an especially interesting, dynamic, and very effective board. Uh, Josh, uh, like the monk in March, you came in a bit like a lion and out like a lamb. As we've heard, my fellow commissioners agree that his contributions to our discussions have been especially insightful, often summarizing exactly what I was thinking, but in a succinct and very definitive way. In terms of policy and analysis, Josh often predicted what I was thinking, and I came to realize how often I agreed, agreed with his position on matters before us. Uh, the most memorable contribution, in my opinion, came during the discussion, it was one of many, July Fourth fireworks, where we had decided we were gonna look, we were gonna survey the community, and then we were gonna. and then we were gonna collect this data and then analyze it. And we had two commissioners speak, one who analyzed it one way, one who analyzed it another way. Stephanie said, listen, we've done this, they've spoken, we really should do what, what the majority prefer. I then agreed with her, even though I liked the other decision, which I don't even know what it was now. Then Josh spoke. And I thought, I, I wasn't sure what you were gonna say, but you said something that's resonated with me and is really helping me with a lot of things that happen on this floor. You said, the thing is, we know more than them. They've been asked the one sentence question and they've answered it. But we have all of this other information that we use to weigh in on our decisions. And based on that, I would say I, we'll vote again, if it went the other way. It's right, we know more, that we have more information, we have more history and so forth. And it was almost like, you know, permission to acknowledge what our position is and what our duty is. And so thank you so much. Absolutely love that. And I will certainly miss your participation and hope to work with you again sometime in the future. Dudley and I began our little journey six years ago. And in that time, I think it's fair to say we formed a true friendship, sharing all the laughs with, that come with serving on a small town public board. He has an absolutely fabulous sense of humor and has provided me with a rational perspective on our shared circumstance. During our between meeting coffees or with the articles he's forwarded, Dudley often puts a theoretical or pedagogical frame around issues and practices. A favorite recollection is the effort he undertook to salvage the breakwater sculpture. Now, it's a key element in the Connect Glencoe path. Who could have predicted that? It was destined for the junkyard. But it, but Dudley understood that it was a piece of art, it had value. And he did quite a lot of work delving into its history, its providence, trying to figure out who might take this on if we were to get rid of it. Eventually broke a solution that engaged the artist to restore the sculpture so that it could stay here in Glencoe where it belongs. Dudley has proven to be a wise, thoughtful, very well prepared, champion of sustainability, and all around kind contributor to the board. And the community is better because of it. I will finish by sharing one of my favorite Dudley phrases, intuitively obvious to the casual observer. And another that applies so well to our departing members and also to, I think, the staff, the revolution of rising expectations. Josh and Dudley, our expectations for the board have risen due to your participation and we wish you both very well in all that you do. Thank you. So now, we will move to recognition gifts.
Yes.
Can we say?
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, I guess we did. Yes, of course you may speak, yes, yes, please.
I have some, I have a prepared speech, I have several pages. I have something I do want to share though, because I really have a passion for the park district. I've served with the Glencoe Park District as a commissioner, president, vice president, treasurer of over six years. And it's been a great experience. I've had the good fortune to join the district after a large bond issue passed and a new professional executive director was hired. Great timing. While I worked as an advisor to local government for over forty years, I had not worked with a park district. In most cities, park and recreation takes a backseat to other city priorities. Not in Glencoe, with an independent board and independent funding, the district can focus on service delivery rather than competing with other city departments for resources. Glencoe residents pay a little more for our park and recreation services than most other communities, but we get a lot for our money. Our district is truly one of the best in the nation due to citizen support, a great staff, and an engaged board. By using a planning approach, we've made lasting physical improvements, large and small, all over the village. Our facilities, parks, and lakefront have never looked better. We also implemented program improvements to support residents and visitors, from infants to adults. Our response to COVID-19 was exemplary and copied by other districts. I've learned a lot about park and recreation during my tenure. When I started, I never heard of Pickle. I also learned about the value of the park board by listening to our citizens, staff, and experts to guide our vision while operating in the world of the possible. We can't do everything we want, but we can do a lot if we plan projects over time. I've also learned the importance of being flexible to take advantage of large donations, state grants, or special opportunities such as food coverage. I've had the chance to work with some great commissioners, staff, consultants, and citizens. While we do not always agree, we all care deeply about the community and are committed to making Glencoe a truly special place. Thank you all. For the future, I expect there'll be more demands for transparency, communication, sustainability, and fiscal stewardship. It's a tall order. As I move to the village board, we'll have new opportunities to work together. I hope you will join me in building an active, caring, informed, and welcoming community. And don't forget to play.
Dudley, you kind of made it look bad by comparing the speech. So with that, expectation lowering phrase out of the way. I, I am, Dudley, I'm surprised that you fell out of your chair when I said in one of our recent meetings that we should not build something because of sustainability. Because I distinctly remember discussing that very topic with the caucus in my interest. That one of the things that I felt the community, so I, I have been sort of our closet sustainability guy. I'm being the senior. And, and. One of the things that I think is a risk for a community like Glencoe that's blessed with a lot of resources is that we may feel compelled to build things because we can, not because we should. And that has both a sustainability angle. And here's another phrase that I think we, several of us enjoyed, should keep in mind. Today's CapEx is tomorrow's topics. So. Thank you for being the loud voice for sustainability in our, in our midst. To the staff. You know, I really couldn't have imagined that I would be involved with such a, such a group of high level professionals. You made it really easy to sit in the balcony. So thank you for that. Chris, every time you wonder, should I do something at the beach? Or should I do something at Everly Wildflower Sanctuary? You know what the answer is. Unless it's to build something. To my other fellow board members. You know, it's almost a cliche to say we have different perspectives, but one of the things that I've really come to appreciate is how each of us, because we're, have our own interests or we're at different stages in our lives, have naturally different things that we're focused on. Stephanie, you just had, you know, a passion for learning the details of early childhood education aspects of the park district that were beyond me, how you had the energy for that. But I was grateful. And might believe you bring a similar perspective, but perhaps from somebody with voice. So thank you for that. It's been a very rewarding experience, it's all of you. I'm really pleased that I did it, Brandon, you'll really enjoy it. And don't be strangers.
Thank you. Very nice, thank you so much. Okay.
Do you want me to give the gifts first, or you want to read the resolutions?
Well, I'll just start reading.
Okay.
Let's do that. So we'll start, we'll, we'll start with Commissioner Dudley Underdonk. This is all. It's beautiful. Here we go. Whereas, this is a resolution honoring the commissioner's service of Dudley Underdonk. Whereas Dudley Underdonk has given exemplary voluntary service as park commissioner from May 2015 to May 2021. Whereas in realization's commitment of time, energy, and expertise to the betterment of services and facilities of the district. And whereas during his tenure, he served as president, vice president, treasurer, special projects and facilities committee chair, chair of the finance committee of the whole park district liaison to the local plan commission, sustainability committee, and member of the lakefront advisory group. Whereas as an avid cyclist and environmentalist, Dudley championed trail development, sustainability, fiscal responsibility, and restoration of the breakwater sculpture. Whereas his contribution to the redevelopment of Astor Park, Vernon Playground, Old Town Playground, Woodlawn Park, Early Childhood Playground, and Duke Park provided an endless amount of joy and memories for the residents of Glencoe. Whereas his contribution to the addition of amenities to the district, including Glenn Fitness Center renovations and Take It Center, and Connect Glencoe provided recreational opportunities for generations to come. Whereas his support during the COVID-19 pandemic, where he provided sound advice and recommendations as the district navigated the public health crisis and changing state guidelines. Whereas during his tenure, the Glencoe Park District earned the Illinois Distinguished Accredited Agency Award in 2019 and National Gold Medal Award for Excellence in Park and Recreation Management in 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Glencoe Park District Board of Commissioners representing all the residents of the park district recognized the meritorious service of Dudley Underdonk and recorded in the permanent record of the Glencoe Park District for all to see. This resolution shall be in full force and in immediate, in effect immediately upon its passage, adopted this eighteenth day of May 2021.
All of you will write it.
So I think that. Okay. Here we go. The resolution honoring the commissioner's service of Josh Lutten. Whereas Josh Lutten has given exemplary voluntary service as park commissioner from May 16, 2017 to May 18, 2021. Whereas in realization of his commitment of time, energy, and expertise to the betterment of services and facilities of the district. And whereas during his tenure, he served as treasurer, chair of the personnel and policy committee, chair of the finance committee of the whole, and chair of the lakefront advisory group. Whereas as an avid runner, sailor, and environmentalist, Josh championed preservation of natural spaces, adding safe routes for lockers, runners, bikers, route connect Glencoe, removed invasive species on the Green Bay Trail and integrated sustainable elements to all special projects. Whereas his contribution to the redevelopment of Astor Park, Vernon Playground, Old Town Playground, Woodlawn Park, Early Childhood Playground, and Duke Park provided an endless amount of joy and memories for the residents of Glencoe. Whereas his contribution to the addition of amenities to the district, including Glencoe Fitness Center renovations and Take It Center, and Connect Glencoe provided recreational opportunities for generations to come. Whereas his support during the COVID-19 pandemic, where he provided sound advice and recommendations as the district navigated the public health crisis and changing state guidelines. Whereas during his tenure, the Glencoe Park District earned the Illinois Distinguished Accredited Agency Award in 2019 and the National Gold Medal Award for Excellence in Park and Recreation in 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved. I'm happy, help me. Can you read a little bit? Right here, starting there, so Glencoe.
The Glencoe Park District Board of Commissioners representing all the residents of the park district recognized the meritorious service of Josh. Recorded the primary reports of the Glencoe Park District for all to see. This resolution shall be in full force and effective upon its passage.
Adopted this eighteenth day of May 2021. Oh, look at that.
That is beautiful.
Oh, my goodness.
Who is the first?
My daughter.
She does this as a side gig.
That's cool.
Oh, my gosh, look at this. And you've got, oh, isn't that? Very good.
The one where, um, the creepy girl where the, yeah, those adventures you have seen.
Very nice.
Cross from the train station. Steel beams?
Oh, the steel beams?
That's very thoughtful.
Thank you for all your service.
And I will say, it used to be a massive plaque that you would take home and not write down. This is, this is, I can't forget.
I like the art.
Okay, so we will need to approve Commissioner Service Resolution Number 923. Commissioner Service Resolution Number 922, Dudley Underdonk. I entertain a motion to approve Commissioner Service Resolution Number 922 for Dudley Underdonk as presented. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Warren? Yeah. Ms. Kobe?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Underdonk?
I can vote for myself.
You can?
Yeah.
President, right?
Yes. And approval of Commissioner Service Resolution Number 923, Josh Lutten. I entertain a motion to approve Commissioner Service Resolution Number 923 for Josh Lutten as presented. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Kobe?
Yes.
Mr.? I'm sorry, Underdonk?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutten?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Motion passes. Yes. We will move now to the oath of office, beginning with Commissioner Warren. Lisa Shepherd as board secretary will administer the oath of office. Stephanie and her daughters will join Lisa at the front of the board tables. Lisa will give the oath in, in repeatable sentence.
Lisa Shepherd.
You want me to come up here?
Wait. Robert's rules.
Order, order.
Robert's rules of order. Maybe you're not.
Really?
Maybe you should, you know, how like when they, when the president, you know, they. Oh, there we go, that's beautiful. Look at that. I'm sure Aaron's all over it.
No, get the mask, if you're gonna take the mask off, take it all off, because it looks funny there.
All right. Ready, now down to the hard part.
Now I gotta repeat.
I.
I.
Stephanie Warren.
Stephanie Warren.
Have been elected to the office of park commissioner.
So I've been elected to the office of park commissioner.
Of the Glencoe Park District. Co-County Illinois. Do hereby solemn declare and affirm. That I was for the Constitution of the United States.
That I was for the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And then I will well and faithfully discharge, discharge the duties.
Of the office of park commissioner.
Of the office of park commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Now we have Brandon. Brandon, we haven't seen him in person.
That's kind of rough.
Whatever you want. Want to take off our picture? Perfect. All right. Please repeat after me.
Okay, I'll try.
Oh, sorry, that was long. I, Brandon Hinkle.
I, Brandon Hinkle.
Have been, having been elected to the Office of Park Commissioner.
Having been elected to the Office of Park Commissioner.
Of the Glenco Park District.
Of the Glenco Park District.
Cook County, Illinois.
Cook County, Illinois.
Do hereby solemnly declare and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly declare and affirm.
That I was for the Constitution of the United States.
That I was for the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Park District Commissioner to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Park District Commissioner for the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right. Yes, let's take a short recess so we can reconfigure things.
Scott, any good books there, buddy? Let's see. These are.
Now we will move to election of president and vice president. Lisa Shepherd as board secretary will conduct the election for the board president and then vice president.
As board secretary, it is my pleasure to open nominations for president of the board. Are there any nominations? And our mayor is.
That for you.
No. I've been sworn in, that's sworn in. Um, any other nominations? Not a file, nomination to vote. So we have a roll call approving Lisa Brooks as part board president. So do you have a second? So what's happening over there?
We gotta mute it somehow.
Mr. Bourne.
Just turn your volume down.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Kobe?
Yes.
Mr. Hankel?
Yes.
President Brooks. All right?
You can vote for yourself.
You can vote for yourself, yes. As board secretary, it is my pleasure to open nomination for vice president of board. Are there any nominations for vice president?
I nominate um.
Any other, oh, we need a second, sorry. Any other nominations? There are no further nominations, nomination for vice president, our board was called. Roll call, a vote approving Stephanie Bourne as part board vice president.
What do you have here?
I motioned to.
I motioned to her.
Second. Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Kobe?
Yes.
Mr. Hankel?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes.
Congratulations to the president and vice president of the park district.
Okay, so now the new president. Same as the old president. And on and on and on and on. Yes, the new president will entertain a motion and my motion is I move to appoint. Michael Kobe as treasurer. Robert Bush of Ansel Blink as attorney and ethics officer. Lisa M. Shepherd as secretary to the board executive director. Can I, do I nominate the representative to the plan commission even though he is not seated?
I think we should probably wait.
I'm gonna wait for that, okay. Lisa M. Shepherd and Jennifer L. Runkel as Freedom of Information Act officers. And Lisa Brooks as representative to the Glencoe Sustainability Committee. Give us that. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Kobe?
Yes.
Mr. Hankel?
Yes.
Okay, before motion passes. We will move to board committee appointments. I will announce the appointments as listed below. Finance committee of the whole chair will be Mr. Michael Kobe. And members are the remaining commissioners. Special projects and facilities committee chair. Um, that will be Stephanie Bora. Personnel and policy committee chair will be co-chair by Michael Kobe and Stephanie Bora.
Okay.
Okay, good. Members for all of the committees will be the remaining members. Okay, now I will announce appointments to as follows. Glencoe Beach and Lakeview Advisory Committee, the chair will, we will announce that at our next meeting. The Watts Advisory Group will be chaired by Michael Kobe. Early childhood advisory group will be chaired by Stephanie Bora. And NSSRA liaison will be Lisa Shepherd as executive director. Believe it or not, back to business. Financial report, one month of the fiscal year is complete. Carol will provide a synopsis of the reports.
Actually, we're two months into the fiscal year.
Good point.
March and April.
Yes.
And it's just to take you back to what April 2020 was like, so we had to shut down March. And so April numbers were not good by any stretch of the imagination. So when we're comparing this year to 2020, keep in mind, I think we did no billing for G D K, E L C. Daycare in the month of April. We had no monies taken in for camp. This year we billed both April 1 and May 1, so we're showing a lot more revenue on the side of 2021 numbers. So you can kind of see from 2019, the numbers for the recreation department are showing favorably to what we did two years ago before COVID. Also to point out, because the second billing for camp is May 1, we're going to show significant improvement in the month of May. Daycare you can see is doing a great job with their surplus with the first two months of the fiscal year. Beach and boating obviously with doing season passes only and taking that money in March versus last year it was in May. Within a very short window, we're looking good and will continue to look good through the beach and boating season. Everything else is pretty much status quo. We did have, because the county gave a two-month leeway. So typically those tax bills for the first installment are due on March 1. They gave until May 1 to assess a penalty for people. And so people obviously utilize that for the first two months. We were down about 450,000, I think I mentioned it the last board meeting. But in early May, it's definitely picking up. So I think by the end of May, we'll be very close to what we were last year.
What percent are you still 99?
You know what, because it's the first installment, we collect 55%.
Sorry, are you 99% of 55%?
Uh, now we are making up in May, yes, yeah. So I was a little concerned about that, but you know, the tax receipts are now coming in a lot stronger in early May. So I don't have that concern that I did last month. Things are looking good, so.
Are your, are your numbers net of refunds, so like a 1.3 million in revenue, is that?
No, and last year at this time, we still did not.
No refunds.
No, when we, when we actually refund, they're taking out, they're putting the liability. And I know it was like $775,000 for camp that got refunded.
So this will, this will look worse before it looks good.
Exactly, exactly.
That's, that's good to know. I will tell you at, at our office, like 2020 was erased and everything is zero for two years. Like everything is, is 2021 or 2019.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like, it's a lost year. Yeah, definitely.
I agree.
And that's really it.
But any other questions for Carol? Okay, then we will move to the executive directory report. Lisa Shepherd will review items in her report.
Excellent. So on June 8th, we're going to have our board workshop. You know, right, Carol Sente is our guest and I'm going to introduce her and have her come off with a few words. So Carol Sente is our, our facilitator for our workshop. She's former member of the Illinois House Representative and a former and now again current board member of the Glencoe Park District. So Carol, thank you for coming and welcome.
I just asked Lisa, who I've known for a long time and would have great respect for. But it would be a nice board meeting to come before we get together and see, you know, the returning members and the new members. And just say hello and have a chance to get to meet you. I met the board president, but that was it before. And so tomorrow I'll be sending you a link because part of what we're going to be talking about will involve a behavioral profile tool. So you'll each get that and I'd love it if you could get it done maybe maybe before Memorial Day weekend. It's very short and that will come back to me. We're not sharing that with anyone else. You'll get your own report, but that's a little piece of what we'll be doing on the 8th. And then I will use the bulk of the time to just kind of kick off your new group of five. And just talk about, and I will send the agenda in the email for, you know, how to present your points effectively. Or sometimes, you know, naturally everyone isn't always, it's not always five to five, right? And, and just how to deal with some of those things effectively so you can continue to grow. You guys have something a little different than we have in Vernon Hills where, you know, you have more turnover. We don't have any term limits. And so that sets up some different dynamics for a group as well. So I'm looking forward to it very much and I thank you for the opportunity. That's about it, congratulations. It was nice to watch the dynamics tonight. So thanks for that and just nice to meet all of you as well.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, but I just wanted to say hi and just see how the evening went.
And congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Vernon Hills Park District, their overall finalists.
I want one of those. I want yours.
You have a very nice indoor hockey facility at Vernon Hills.
Yes.
Yes.
Except it doesn't have the park. And either are the golf courses.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was just.
Sometimes I'm really happy about that, so.
But then I like the idea of someone moving from a park board after the building. And I was saying, it's different communities because I used to own an architectural firm that designed park district buildings. So I have been in the park industry for a long time, that's how I got on the board. And so you watch these dynamics and I think sometimes when someone moves from one to the other. You, you know, it has helped the situation, whether it was, hopefully it's really good already. When I got on my park board, our relationship with our village wasn't good. Yeah, it was actually terrible. And we worked really hard to develop it, so it takes effort.
Yeah.
But I'm sure this will help, so.
Thank you so much. All right, so we have really been monitoring all the COVID-19 changes. And really one of the newest ones, and I always do laugh, they come down at like 4:00, 5:00 and Thursday or Friday. Whenever they throw these change setups. And the mask mandate was no different. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on what we're thinking about and give your opinions on how we should move forward with this. And really, what I really want to talk about today or tonight is indoor. We're not getting enough clarification on outdoor yet. And we're hoping that the state gives us more guidance or the CDC gives more guidance on that. So pretty much for outdoor, we're going to stick with what we're kind of doing now and we're going to kind of what we're doing for recommend for indoor. So we are in a unique situation because we have a daycare which is DCFAS. So they, DCFAS is in the order that says they have to have a mask on for anybody 2 and older. And that includes anybody that's in that wing, parents that walked in that way, teachers. So that one's kind of easy. That one's mandated by the state. The, the gray one is that park districts will not mention anywhere in the order. Pretty much you can figure it out yourself, it's kind of the, 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 the line between the lines. Schools have a mandate and we're kind of in between those. Obviously we have a lot of children that come into our building at any given time that aren't able to get vaccinated. So that was one of the things that we kept in back of our mind when we were thinking about what we were going to recommend that going forward. We also realized that a lot of people are vaccinated that are 15 and older. Or yeah, now 12-year-olds can get it, so 12-years-old. So what we're recommending is that when people enter our building and go within any of our common spaces, they have to wear a mask. Because at any given point, they can run into a child that has not been able to be vaccinated. Once, if they're, if they're adults, 12 or older and are fully vaccinated. So that means if you're 12 and had vaccine last week, you're not fully vaccinated for another five or six weeks, right? Or weeks for the next shot and then two weeks after the after. Once they get, three weeks for the shot. Once they get into their classroom, it's an adult program of people 15 or, if you are vaccinated, you can take off your mask and participate in that class. If you want to wear your mask in the class, you're more than welcome to. We'll have signage that we post on the wall that's legal language from the D R H that's, that says something like. We're, by entering this program without a face covering, you are verifying truthfully that you have been vaccinated or that you received vaccination. So always will be on those people, okay? So that, that will apply to our fitness classes, our fitness center, art, ceramics, those, and then other adult programs over that age. The fitness center, we are just still give a couple of time options for people that want their mask. So say they're not comfortable, not fully vaccinated, because we do have some children that come with 12 and older that come with their parents to work out. We still want to give them the opportunity to work out. So we'll figure out mask required slots that they can come in and work out in that time. For all other programs, if they're 12, 11 and under and they are in class, they have to wear the mask and everybody associated with them has to wear a mask. Inside. And the only time it's, they go outside and have to wear a mask is what the rules are now. They're socially distanced, six, six feet apart and usually that's when they're feeding or, or things like that. But other than that, if they're playing close together, they have to wear the mask. That applies to anybody that's in that area. So that's teachers, custodians, anything like that will have to do those. So we're kind of hitting all the bases. Trying to see if I put anything else. So that's kind of how we would like to proceed. It's kind of, it's really hard because we have a feeling that more regulations will come out by when we make this change and they'll teach that. Well, we know that people are, are reasking what we're doing. You saw the message we sent out last week saying we're sticking to it, so we kind of get more clarification. Yeah. So we thought this was a happy medium between the two. We give people the, the adults are vaccinated, the ability to go to class without, but still keep our, our kids and our staff safe when they're entering to our building. Other staff will be clarifying to them when they wear a mask. So anybody in our common spaces, so that'd be up front desk, they will be required to still have the mask. If you know they have the front, stand in offices and that, or if they're fully vaccinated over 18, they don't have to wear the mask if they're having, such as this, if they're fully vaccinated. So what are your thoughts, can throw that out there, what are your thoughts on this?
I completely agree with everything you said.
Wow, that's good.
I mean, kids got to be important, the kids, make sure that's. The kids can't be protected, you know, they, they don't have access to be protected and they shouldn't feel. I think the community would appreciate and the parents would appreciate that they are still protected in our care. And I think it's expected.
I think so too.
And I think the other camps will be the same.
I think, I think they will also, so we'll get more clarification, but I have a feeling the schools are going in that direction, so I feel surprised and happen some of that to, you know.
This, this, you may give the same answer to the question I asked on the parks before, but the liability, what's the potential liability? Like if someone, you know, gets sick and say it's because of, you know, you guys weren't masked up, what's the, the risk on that?
There is, there is no risk, liability wise for us on that. Cracks.
From a worker's comp perspective or?
Yeah.
And all of our employees have been given the opportunity to be vaccinated, most of them I believe are. We are going to actually start to request proof of vaccination for our employees for just that reason. It does protect us a little bit more from that situation.
Yeah, I was going to say, so that's how, if, you know, like I know the kids, it's fully where the sticker is saying, you know, the temperature's been taken. And, and you know, if there's a sticker or they, they sign in saying, yeah, we're vaccinated, so we don't have to wear it. But based on your answer, I, I agree with everything you said.
Yeah, we can't ask them to wear a sticker. We can't, we, we got a patient from the D R H that we can't ask if they're vaccinated. So that way, if they're not wearing a mask, we know they should be. And number two is that if we have a outbreak of COVID, if you're not vaccinated, then you have to be 14 for two weeks, just like before. But if you are vaccinated, you don't have to be. So that helps us kind of figure out those dynamics also.
I have two thoughts. One, we need to be careful that our indoor policy is not looser than our outdoor policy. Because that will make us look a little foolish. Like we can't say that, hey, look, if you're vaccinated, you're 15 and you're in art class, you don't have to wear a mask. But, oh, we don't have a policy for outside yet, just, just, I'm not saying anything to do anything about it.
No, that's a good point, because we will follow this same one for outside.
Okay, we will, okay.
You can get looser outside until we get more guidance.
Well, but you're going to get looser inside.
No.
No, it's exactly the same.
It's going to be the exactly same outside, but we're not going to, you said we'll get more guidance.
That's fine.
And we're not going to say kids under 12 can run around without masks.
So those, those policies are both inside and outside.
Yes, yes.
That makes me feel a lot better. And then do we have, I agree with the comment areas, makes complete sense. We've talked about this a lot in the past. Do we have any insight into staff that are not going to appreciate this new policy? Like are there any teachers, I'm, I'm just picking on the pottery for just a second because I don't want to think of it as adult. Do we have any teachers in the pottery where I say, you know what? I'm out because I don't like this policy. Like do we foresee any challenges like that?
Well, we're reading to our safety, maybe tomorrow to talk through it with staff. Just if they have any, any reservations on this. We do know that quite a few teachers have come up and said, can you take off your mask? It's a, you know, our example that the, the, the students wanted to, the teacher can have, has the right to wear a mask even if all their students aren't.
Right, yeah. But if they, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned about like, is there going to be, is there going to be a, a teacher that says, you know what? Like, I don't trust that people are really vaccinated. I think it's, I think everyone should have to wear a mask in my class.
Well, it's, it's possibility, but we've always followed the CDC guidelines and we can't justify not following CDC guidelines just to the teachers.
I totally agree, I'm just thinking about it in a different perspective, so. But otherwise, I, I agree.
And you guys have Dan? We had a great, great two-hour discussion about this, so to get down to this.
Two sessions.
I think we are so long. Very passionate, you know, because there's no white answer. And what do we do? Do we just make everybody wear a mask all the time? And so we had, I'm talking, I'm a brownie. And really came down to that we've always followed the CDC guidelines and I love I P H's guideline and the thirst. How can we just, how can we say we've always followed that except for now, whatever.
Look, I think it makes sense, I think it's the right time. And I think you're going to find that Glencoe's over-indexed in vaccinated people as well versus it.
We told you, there was no article about it, we're like 70%.
Oh, really?
It's crazy, I'll, I'll find it.
Yeah.
Not surprisingly.
Just to weigh in, absolutely agree with everything, really don't have a choice. And I was thinking as we talked about this, how many staff hours the park district has since the beginning of March last year discussing this? What is the direction and how do we apply?
Oh my God. I, I, oh my God, I think sometimes it's 30 hours a week. You know, it's, it's crazy because they, they change regulations sometimes weekly, so.
And it's not, it's not been here for quite a while.
We're somewhat not lucky, but I think, you know, if Florida, if Chicago didn't go with the state, it would be much tougher. But now that Chicago is kind of going with the state, it makes it a little bit.
Yeah.
More justifiable. So I think we're, we're, I think everything should be right. I'm excited to go on the Peloton without a mask. It's hard. And I'll say this too, it's interesting from this, you know, management point now, this leadership point, it's always super easy to criticize decisions. It's hard to make decisions. And I love the fact that you came with the recommendation. It's also easy to say, here's the situation, what do you guys want to do, but it comes with a good recommendation, you have just a lot of time to do it, so.
Thank you, appreciate that, those, and I do appreciate it. You're absolutely right.
Very, you did critique.
Yes.
Anyone serving kids for the next six months is in the hardest position.
We are, yeah.
Yeah, it's the problem because you know, you know, everyone else, it's like a blanket approach and not anyone serving kids is.
You're exactly right. The village's approach is in totally different eyes, you know.
Yeah.
And it, and I am in the North Shore Directors Group and it seems like everybody's leaning the same way that we're going.
The century's supposed to be tough because you're going to have to get vaccinated. And I will, actually I have to get vaccinated. I will tell you, there are plenty of people in Glencoe who are anti-vaccine as well. I know we're 70%, but.
What for their kids?
For their kids.
No, for them as well. So I think there are people who, I, I know kids who don't want to get it. I know parents who are, if their kids get it, I know parents are going to get it and it's going to be a challenge. So we've just got more time to go, I think following CDC guidance is the right way to do it.
And if there's a program, it's just, for example, the summer, our, one of our camps for just ages, it will default to the younger age. So it will default to the ones who can't get vaccines.
Right, and then what about the, the parks? I mean, in general, we've said, you know, we say wear a mask. Yeah, right, is there going to be any kind of signage posted there or is that?
No, I think that's just like we have a board. It's really tough because don't put signage out that you can't police. And how are we supposed to police that? So the, the, we're everywhere that you should wear your mask. Kids under whatever age are not vaccinated, you should wear masks. It's going to be those parents' choice and you can't police them. And I, that's where we think there will be more guidance coming out because as beaches and pools and day camps, it'll be interesting what they identify as. And we've all seen studies that shows that outdoor transmission is very low. So as, as that data starts coming in, but we are not going to police that. We're just going to, just say we recommend that you, you know, wear a mask and, and you brush skin. Because we don't have people that can leave playgrounds and things like that, so.
Thank goodness.
I, all I can say that, I think my, my, I think my board is so good, I see them writing in school every morning, it's amazing, they all have a mask on, they're, you know. We repeat that because kids are so much better at this mask reading.
Well, I think that.
You know, three-year-old, our two-year-old's amazing.
Summer's going to be tough because it's, it's hot again. It's, it's hot again. And especially when you see other adults not wearing their masks, it's going to be tough, so.
And we did have that discussion, at some, at some point we're also, our teachers have to be role models for that. You know, even if they're outside, so they're teaching us on the class, we're with kids, you should have a mask on just to be a role model, you know, you're vaccinated. Maybe a parker bathroom is not standing, is six feet away and in the boiling sun every day, maybe they don't have to have a mask on. So that's some stuff we'll be buying. Right, right, yeah, probably not, so we'll try.
Well, they're over, if they're over, if they're vaccinated, why would a kid or parent have to?
Right, and we, we don't think they do.
Right.
And then, but if they go into a building with around younger kids, they would.
Yeah, I mean, last year we didn't have a good.
Yeah, right, right, right. And the mask mandate, mandate didn't come back till August. So we were pretty much done.
Oh my God.
And then the second session.
So did not, did you?
Oh, really?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was right after camp.
One term, not finished, yeah.
So that's why we're waiting to see if there's more direction for the outside, when you're outside. So right now, at schools, you can outside, take your mask off, take your six feet apart, but we know that not a lot of kids, so. There's going to be more direction, you know.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing, I'm very excited that we, um, to announce that we've hired a new finance director, uh, I guess it's better sweet. Happy we have someone to fill. I'll be so happy.
Totally, this doesn't work out.
I'm so happy. Oh, so we're very excited to welcome John Cartier. He'll start, uh, June signing, can't wait for y'all to meet him. He had a really, um, great set of candidates, um, like we'll participate, definitely a place that people want to work, so we're very happy to be choosing and get the best candidate for the job, so I think it'll be a great addition to the team then. Um, his credentials are very impressive, so. Uh, other than that, um, season passes for the beach, what are they at now, do you know, or?
Over sixty-six hundred.
Over sixty-six hundred, so they continue to be, that's a great, uh, money, and, and, um, as the restrictions open up, more people will go down to the beach, so that'll be nice, I know, is that great, so.
Only eighty-five hundred people in my crowd, and I realize they're not all resuming.
Yes, it's a little more than twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, we do have.
Twenty-sixty, sixty-six percent of residents.
Yeah, we more than I was in the church last year.
Oh, really?
They, that, yeah, we're buying passes, and we actually think that number of office, yes, people, um, they're, we can take it in, so. And we'll buy passes, and you know, we're worth it, so.
Bobby, where are the non-resident passes predominantly located?
A lot of, a lot of Northbrook, Glenview, there's a spread over a lot of different zip codes, some I've never heard of.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's spread over a lot, nine or two and out.
An interesting, uh, fact is that, you know, we, we, uh, had senior passes for free.
Yes, yeah.
And the result of that is they're buying a lot of guest passes for their families.
Oh, yeah, and there's likes on that at all?
No, they love it, so I think we actually had more people get, seniors get passes, because it was free, and now we're buying all these guest passes for our families.
That's great.
With our, our wives and for the rest of, so.
Really, we're buying new households that we had, so we're going to be able to get some, some households, what do you call it, another, that's great, it's great.
Yeah, plus they walk into the building, if they see any signage, they may pick up a catalog or something for the summer.
Exactly, yeah, so holding market, so, uh, we're thrilled with that. Chris has been extremely busy in the parks, um, go ahead, obviously, the last couple of weeks, so I want to be going to get more updates on projects right now.
Oh, yeah, it's been a very exciting spring. Uh, we wrapped up construction on the South Overlook, uh, last week, so that's all ready to go for the beach season. Uh, we're looking to have a carpenter on site, uh, down on North Beach for the staircase next week, so it's proceeding. Uh, along, you know, we did a couple of stags here and there, there's always some surprising stuff in the ground, especially when you're dealing with a hundred and some year old community, so. Uh, we did find some, uh, some extra pipes that were down there that we had to make some changes to accommodate, but nothing that our contingency would absorb. Uh, projects moving ahead in clock, we've got the drainage in, staff doing restoration of the turf. We're plowing ahead to make sure that we have some green grass there for July fourth. Uh, the trail itself, uh, we're still working on the punch list, um, very lucky to have I G A T as our big stick with this contractor, so. We're holding them to task, uh, right now, they're actually being held up on about a quarter million dollar payout on a two thousand dollar item. So, um, I G A T is like the biggest bully on the block when it comes to funding contractors accountable, so. It's been great to have their support on this project and, uh, through the federal funding that you got for the project, so. All in all, uh, projects are moving ahead, uh, moving ahead, very nice, so, any questions?
Uh, anything?
Trail looks pretty, thank you.
Everything looks great, the overlook.
Overlook, it's so good.
Right, and, so in clock, I was very surprised that there wasn't as much, you know.
It doesn't want to disrupt.
No, they, when they went in for the pipes, that was very impressive, so.
They did a great job in not tearing up the whole park.
Yeah.
That was their approach, um, was what allowed them to have a really aggressive bid, so, um, they just really trenched in the new lines and filled them in, and then we did the restoration in-house to save ourselves some money, so.
What's that done?
What's that?
When, when's clock?
Uh, we're targeting having the meadow area completed for the Fourth of July, the other areas, like the lighting and the plaza, maybe a little bit before that, a little bit after that, depending.
Are we, like, do you have plans or rededication on Pop Park or anything to kind of celebrate the fact that we can use this again?
I mean, uh, we could, maybe we'll mix it one, we have a lot of, we have a lot of special events.
Yeah.
Like, or returning special events, I should say, like kids concert series or something like that, we can always, some concerts out there.
We're, we're starting that concert, yeah.
We could figure it out, something in there.
I like the idea of, of letting people know why we did this to Pop Park, like, a little bit of like, hey, look, you can, and maybe, I, hopefully Stephanie likes this idea, too, you know, like, we want people to rent it out and to have their wedding there, have their, so there, have, and that's one of the reasons why we ended up doing this, so that people can use Pop Park at the rate, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Um, speaking about dedications, we, we are dedicating to on Saturday of, uh, Saturday, uh, Memorial Day.
Friday, Friday night at ten o'clock.
Twenty-nine to ten o'clock. So it was purposely not to be the media, lips and eyes, we're, um, trying to keep the number, so, yeah, there's a few, so it's really providing all the, the family, um, reserve the family, and we're going to be looking maybe for some volunteers to start a train and things like that, so. We're excited to, I don't know, preview that, the train will open that day, and the, the spray ground will open that day. So we, pretty finished that.
And that's Saturday, twenty-nine?
Uh, yeah, right, Saturday.
Saturday at ten o'clock.
Do we know when, um, are, so we're going to lock the train up at night, do you have a time we're going to do that?
We actually decided not to lock it up right now, we're going to try it without locking it up. We had GPS, um, trackers on them.
Okay.
So, uh, Chris, ideal is as long as there weren't fields and runs them down the road, we're going to see if we can keep it without locking up after that, so.
Are there lights on that?
No, there's.
There's one light on the barn, I will tell you, when you see the train cars, they, they're not like the kind of thing that you pick up and run off with.
Yeah.
They're, they got to wait through, so, you know, we're, we're going to evaluate that as we go with Lisa's point. Um, we're going to know where, where they are all the time, so we'll be able to set up a, a GPS locator on the park, and anytime they leave the park, we're going to know. So, uh, yeah, it's a technology that they use on job site equipment, so like if someone steals your generator on your construction site, you know where it is, and you call police, and they go against your generator, so we're going to use that tech on our, um.
Our cars, I like that.
So they're going to have a side.
Yeah, I have the Apex on that one. We'll see if, but actually, it's actually like fifty dollars a year, it's, it's unbelievably inexpensive for what it is.
Whereas having staff, every night is on everybody, are expensive.
Yeah, absolutely, so that's great.
So we, we decided that we're just going to, we're going to do that at first, and so that we can get it spending use, otherwise, on a Saturday, the C F P's at, at four, they'd have to be locked up. So we're going to, we're going to try this, we're, with the new GPS app now, we can.
That's great, same across.
Um, same across on that one, yeah. In addition, we're also doing, um, Memorial Day celebration at normal, we always participate in that, but this year, Lisa's going to speak a little bit about the renovation of the veterans plaza. Um, so it's that A D, A D A is up for.
Busy, we can't wait.
And the program is, is, is intense.
Well, they usually, it looks like a lot, but it's like twenty minutes, probably. That's what Phil told me today, right? So.
Maybe I read fast.
Um, just to give you a little, little heads up, and a little tip up with A Y S O, and, um, here, the, we discovered through, um, routine inspections that the holes weren't be locked up according to Z E T law. So we, we spoke to A Y S O, they're responsible as they're in, as a affiliate, it's in their agreement, so we got a little conversation with them, and, um, and went over all the requirements of the law to make sure they are being locked up and secured properly. And in addition, we are going to have our, our guys inspected weekly when they do the molding and stuff, just to make sure they're here, it's that, you know. So, um, there was also a neighbor that's concerned about the practice nets along the, um, road.
The west side.
The west side, uh, what road is that?
It's not going with the opposite side of the road.
Road, yeah, so they, that's, they're closer to the, like, practice nets are cut by the street side, and then they have nets are cut between the schools and the soccer fields.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, just for ease of movement, if a resident's concerned that kids are finding the nets. Those, those holes are secured properly, they're meeting everything with the law, um, this concern is that kids are finding that, and so we're bringing it to the safety committee, um, because whether they're finding the nets there, or they're finding the nets on the side, um, we feel it may be parents' responsibility to watch their children during that thing. So the safety committee's to review that, see if they, if they can move it, a lot more labor intensive to have the thread all the way out each time, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're going to see if they feel it to safety issues, so we're going to bring that back to safety committee, so. Keep up to date on that. Um, other than that, I don't think I have anything else, unless you have any questions.
Well, that looks awesome, and the lights that take it are white, so, thank, thanks guys for, for doing it.
Very nice job, um, kudos for the, our staff and bodies and his team, the summer training, um, if you look in your packet, very expensive. In the world, world of COVID, it's very hard to get this accomplished, so, um, uh, they're doing, I know there's a group doing first aid tonight in fact, so. Um, we take very seriously our job of training young, young adults for our positions, um, in our district, so, uh, that, that training has already started, so.
It's a huge benefit, just looking at it, really good job this year, it's really good. Was it, did you have any difficulty in hiring?
Yeah, this year?
Yeah.
We, we were really lucky this year, we were short one or two positions, but I'm getting calls daily from other districts begging for staff, and we're ninety-nine percent there. We, we had a really good year.
Great.
Not going to kick shit, but, yeah.
Great.
With the Parker masters, is it going to be the same as last year, where they're going to move around in different areas, depending on, we, you know, like, we're near the beach, maybe they'll be at like two o'clock?
Yeah, very good question, yeah, we decided to bring that back this year, and I, it may be a permanent, you know, we found such value to it. So they'll start out at the beach, and then they'll roll from tennis courts to programs in session, to, um, it's the soccer fields. So they'll check out other programs also, so maybe direct supervisor doesn't have to work every Saturday and checking out those programs, and start master will help with that. Um, and then move back to the beach, so they'll be all around, right? And we're going to do it Sunday to weekend first, and then we may, um, scale it down to just weekends, Fridays and weekends, um, as we run.
Good question. Interesting, yet another thing you mentioned, but.
Yeah, you said it, yeah.
Householder yesterday.
Yes.
Interesting, forced it, and not, there's so many things COVID forced us to do that turned out to be a good thing that we probably would not otherwise have, just like push just.
Yeah.
So it's very interesting. Thank you, Lisa, is there?
That's all, yeah, any questions, any other questions?
For me, my team.
Um, I have one question, I don't know if it was addressed in here, the, how is the, uh, it's my home, you, Aaron, or, how is your, uh, software coming along?
It's going to be a busy.
Like, all things are on track?
We're going to, we're still going to test that out, but.
Oh, my God.
You're going to be volunteering, right?
Yes. We're going to be big testers.
Uh, you, my wife will be your number one volunteer on that one.
It probably won't happen until later in the fall.
Yeah, I just want to be like the, the consultant's hiring, all that good stuff is, is working its way through. I'm going to get that done.
We know. Alright.
Okay, well, then, uh, I have a motion, I entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Second, so we're, six, seven.
Hold, hold, please. Mr. Lauren?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Obie?
Yes.
Ms. Jerk, you know?
Yes.
Right, the motion passes, thank you, eight thirty-seven, thank you all.
Why don't we turn it to the top of the screen?
We're going to brand it.